Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. Welcome to the October Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in a performance meeting to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10-4-6. Proper meeting notice of this other meeting was published in the local newspaper on October 5th, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that you make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later theme on CATV Channel 77 and files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, in physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Can we please take the roll call, please?
Ms. Campory?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Klupka?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Takarian?
Here.
Ms. Engley?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We are going to start off with the superintendent's report tonight, so I'm going to pass the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I have a superintendent's report that includes some calendar updates and some points of pride and some things that we are very proud of across the district, so I wanted to share those with you. This presentation will be posted on the website, just as last board meeting's presentation was, so by all means, if there's anything that you cannot see or it isn't clear, you can access it on the website tomorrow morning. So just a couple of quick calendar updates. Our schools are closed tomorrow on October 9th. They are also closed for Columbus Day on Monday, October 14th. On Wednesday, October 23rd, there is an early dismissal. It's a 1 o'clock dismissal for all students, and the purpose of that is for parent-teacher conferences at the elementary and middle school level, as well as the high school showcase of excellence. And on Monday, October 28th, I just wanted to draw attention to our first Title I family event. It's going to be held at Hoboken High School from 6:15 to 8:30. We hope as many families come. We already have well over 150 people signed up for it. It's a Halloween theme around science, so it should be a lot of fun for children of all ages. On the next slide, we have a number of points of pride that we thought would be great to share not only with the Board of Education, but also with the public. You can actually read the individual names, but I just wanted to highlight some of the programs that our students have participated in and were accepted to this past summer and already during this school year. So we have students at Hoboken High School that have been accepted and have already begun participating in the Rutgers Pre-Medical Honors Program, so we're very proud of them. We also have a student who recently represented not only Hoboken High School, but all of Hudson County at the NJSIAA Senior Leadership Summit in Princeton, New Jersey, so we're extremely proud of Jihad McCall. We have students that, over the summer, participated in the Stevens Institute of Technology Summer Aces Program, but not only did they participate in that program, they were also scholarshiped for the program, so it was of no cost to them. We also have a group of students that participated in Montclair State University's Hispanic Student College Institute, which was a great opportunity for them during the summer months. One of our students, Rebecca Weintraub, was accepted into Yale University's Young Global Scholars International Affairs and Globalization Summer Program, so she was extremely happy about that. And Gabby D'Antonio was accepted into Yale University's National Student Leadership Summer Conference. We also had a student who participated in NJIT's Summer Financial Literacy Program, and we've been making a lot of connections with NJIT along with Stevens Institute and Montclair University as well, so you'll be seeing more students participating in programs at NJIT. We had a student that participated in St. Peter's University's Research for Young Scholars and Community Engagement STEM Achievement Retention and Success Program this summer. And lastly, we had some students that were recognized by the college board for their academic success on the Advanced Placement exams. So we had two students that were named Advanced Placement Scholars by the college board. We had two students who were named Advanced Placement Scholars with honors by the college board, and we also had two students, Natalie Bond and Rebecca Weintraub, who were named Advanced Placement Scholars with distinction by the college board. So we're proud of them for all of their accomplishments, and we'll continue to update you on those throughout the year. Now, we're just going to do a quick little congratulations to Hoboken High School. Recently, they were notified that they were winners of the New Jersey Department of Education's School Spirit Contest. If you haven't seen the little video that they did, I believe it's just about on every social media vehicle that's out there. Take a look at it. The video is fantastic. The kids were so excited about the pop-up pep rally, and they were selected. And so, as a result, the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Repelay, will be visiting the Hoboken School District and Hoboken High School for some time in the very near future, so we're excited about that. Hoboken High School, their athletic department, our student athletes, were awarded the NJSIAA Sportsmanship Award for 2018-2019. This is our second year in a row achieving this award, so we're extremely excited about that. And just quickly, to go through some updates for all of you, we talked about this at the last meeting, but we have been expanding our Passport to Learning program. Not only do we have Passport to Learning for our elementary school students, but we also have Passport to Wellness at the middle school level, and we just recently added We Passport. We had a session today that I'll tell you about in a minute that was well-attended, and the families and the children had a fantastic time. Today was our sing-along dance party for We Passport, and we had toddlers, children from the ages of 1 to 3 prior to entering preschool come, and one of our teachers, Ms. Trina, taught the class, and it was a lot of fun, and the feedback has been extremely positive. So the next session that we're having in October is Fairy Tale Theater, and you can see from the calendar behind me, the events just continue through the year. The K-5 Passport to Learning Program's second trimester, which is the winter session, will be starting. Registration has begun already, and the courses are pretty much the same. There aren't a whole lot of differences in the courses, where you'll see the differences are in our grades 6 through 8 Passport to Wellness program. So I just wanted to take a minute to announce that in the middle school, the Passport to Wellness program not only will be keeping codeedum, open gym, academic support, the dinner program, band orchestra, chorus, and junior thespians, but in this round of courses, students will also be able to select from model rocketry, film critique club, acrylic painting, and then on the wellness activity side, hip-hop dance, spin class, yoga and mindfulness, volleyball, archery, cardio, kickboxing, basketball, fencing. And there was one additional program that Mr. Delafabe was thinking about adding, and that was tabletop tennis, but he wanted to make sure he had the enrollment for it, so if we do, we will, in fact, add it. At this time, I'd like to announce that we are in the midst of Week of Respect, and during Week of Respect, all of our schools participate in a range of activities that actually promote kindness, anti-bullying, and at this time, I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, to tell us a little bit about what's going on in the schools.
Absolutely. So in New Jersey, school districts recognize the importance of developing and maintaining positive school climates and providing students with a safe and supportive school environment that is devoid of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It encourages academic success and increased social and emotional competence. The Week of Respect offers schools an opportunity to concentrate on these efforts by delivering age-appropriate instruction to students on these essential topics. Week of Respect, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, requires that the week beginning with the first Monday in October of each year, so for this year, we are currently in that week of October 7th through the 11th, that it be designated as the Week of Respect in New Jersey. To recognize the importance of social and emotional learning and character education, we are required to observe the week by providing age-appropriate instruction focusing on respect and at all of our levels. Hoboken Public Schools takes this charge very seriously and has provided our students with a plethora of experiences to communicate the importance of giving and receiving respect, and in a greater sense, of the importance of belonging to a positive and welcoming school community. So I will highlight about two or three things that are happening at all of our schools, beginning with Hoboken High School. Students will engage in the Chalk It Up Initiative with all of the elementary schools, where high school students will travel to the schools and write notes of encouragement on the sidewalks around the schools. Student groups have already left inspirational post-it notes on all lockers. This was a comprehensive community-building exercise and certainly made the entire student body take notice and felt as if they were seen. At Hoboken Middle School, staff and students are currently collecting personal care products to be donated and delivered to the Hoboken Shelter. Some examples of what has already been collected include shower soap, shampoo, toothbrushes, toothpaste, shaving cream, hand sanitizer, deodorant, and hand soap. Also, to celebrate relationships and friendships, students will be encouraged to mix it up at lunch each day. This means that they're going to go out of their box and sit with a new friend who they might not have ever thought of sitting with. At Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School, students begin the day with a focus on powerful words that define their charge this week and beyond, words like "respect," "kindness," "acceptance," "diversity," and "encouragement." Principal Bartlett is highlighting and defining these words during morning announcements, and teachers will reinforce the words during their morning meetings and review how students can practice this in their lives daily. Students wore blue for World Day of Bullying Prevention on this past Monday. They wore their favorite team jersey to show that respect is indeed a team effort. They will also have the Kindness Referral kickoff this week. Teachers will nominate students to be recognized and rewarded when they are observed or caught demonstrating kindness towards others. At Connors, students have received a random Act of Kindness bingo board to keep track and promote extra kindness throughout the day. As they complete the Acts of Kindness, they will color in the completed task. The goal is for each student to have completed the board by the end of the week that celebrates the Week of Respect. Students will have the opportunity to write positive shout-out messages to one another in their ELA classes, which will be brought home at the end of the week. They too will be participating in Chalk It Up, where they will go outside with their teachers and write messages of respect and kindness on the blacktop outside of their school courtyard. And lastly, at Wallace Elementary, students will engage in Peace Pals. A Peace Pal is a student that demonstrates the care's character traits from the Wallace School's peace pledge. Students will also engage in an exciting and cross-curricular peaceful door decorating contest or exhibition. Students will get creative to showcase what peace means to them individually and as a classroom community. That's the Week of Respect in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez. Does anyone have any questions about the Week of Respect? No? Okay, so I'll keep going. The next item is that on behalf of the entire school district, we wish two teams the best of luck that are going to be competing in Atlantic City. Last spring, over 550 teams entered the Steam Tank Challenge throughout the state of New Jersey. A number of teams were selected to head to Atlantic City at the end of October to compete in the state semifinals. I would like to recognize Hoboken Middle School has a team that will be going, and they're going to be presenting their invention Bag in a Box. And we also have a team from Hoboken High School that's going to be presenting their invention Glucose and Go. Hopefully, one of those teams or both of those teams will make it to the state finals. Last year, if everyone recalls, Wallace Elementary School had the state championship team for the elementary division, and it was really exciting getting to see them compete at both the October and the November presentations in Atlantic City. Okay, the next slide is just an update, not only for the board. I've been trying to keep you abreast of the enrollment growth in the district, but it's also important to keep everyone informed of what's going on. So what I did was I put a chart on one side, bar graph, so you can just kind of see, and on the left-hand side, an actual chart. So you can see that we had, from last year to this year, basically as of today, these are our most current numbers, an increase in our preschool enrollment of 71 students. If we look at our enrollment holistically in the district, pre-K through grade 12, from the last day of school in June to today, we have an increase of 293 students in pre-K through 12. If we remove the pre-K, our increase at the K-12 level is 222, and there have been some people that have asked, "But what about at the elementary level? What about at the middle school level? What about at the high school level?" So I thought it would be important to show you that as well. So at the K-5 level, we have an increase of 166 students. 6-8 level, an increase of 39 students. 9-12, increase of 17 students. Middle-high school combined, an increase of 56 students. And what's most notable about those numbers is, over the past few years, we've never had a time when our grades 5 through 8 has not had a decline in enrollment. This year, we're seeing an increase in enrollment in those grades, so we're really happy about that. And finally, let's keep our vision in the forefront. The Hoboken Public School District will be recognized as a premier educational choice and widely known as a best-practice model for academic growth, high-quality instruction, innovative and equitable programs, engagement facilities, and personalized pathways that are essential for college career and life preparedness in our ever-changing interconnected global society. And now, it is time for our Students of the Month. So at this time, I'm going to turn the program over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez to facilitate our Students of the Month.
I want to begin this part of the meeting, this what we know to be a celebration, by sharing that our Connor student Alexandra Nupp from grade 1 and Principal Addy could not be here as they're honoring Yam Kapur. The student will join us for the November board meeting to receive her accolade along with Principal Addy. But at this time, I would ask that the Joseph F. Brandt Principal, Mr. Bartlett, come up to the podium to celebrate Tomer Sagal, a kindergartner. He will then introduce the Wallace School.
At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Tomer Sagal to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Tomer Sagal, the Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month for September 2019. Tomer was nominated for Student of the Month by Ms. Campbell and Mrs. Ayello. Throughout the month of September, Tomer overcame his nervousness at school by trusting his friends and teachers. They helped him adjust and become comfortable in his kindergarten classroom. In return, Tomer has shown to be an incredible friend by being consistently kind and always willing to help others with schoolwork and during activities. As principal, it was fantastic to see Tomer get over his initial trepidations during the first days of school and start letting his wonderful personality shine. One of the things that is so great about Tomer is his smile. He always tries to hide it, but sooner or later, he can't help but let it out. Ms. Campbell and Ms. Ayello said, "Tomer began kindergarten knowing how to read and has used his strength to excel in the classroom, in his own work, and as a mentor to others. Tomer is a model student. Not only does he excel academically, he can always be counted on to make the best choices and follow instructions right away. He is frequently praised for his choices and sets a fantastic example for others. Tomer is an asset to our classroom and school. Tomer enjoys drawing pictures with his little sister and playing soccer. He said he would like to be a chef when he gets older and really enjoys baking chocolate chip cookies. Tomer's favorite subject in school is music class with Ms. Momblat. When told he would receive this award, Tomer said, 'I love to come to school because it is fun.'" Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Tomer Sagal, the Joseph F. Brandt School Student of the Month for September 2019. At this time, I would like to introduce my colleague and dear friend, the Principal of the Wallace Elementary School, Mr. Martin Shannon. At this time, I would like to call Victoria Maximovich to the podium as the Wallace School Student of the Month for September. Victoria is a second-grade student in Mrs. Schickman's class at Wallace School. She was nominated by her teacher as the Student of the Month for September because she is an exceptional student and an awesome individual. Victoria comes to class prepared and eager to learn every day. She's actively engaged during daily lessons and collaborates well with her peers. She is respectful towards her classmates and the staff at Wallace School. Victoria is friendly, hard-working, and creative. She cares about her school, her friends, and her community. As her principal, I appreciate the hard work Victoria shows both in and out of the classroom. Her friendly and personable demeanor, combined with her zeal for learning, has developed Victoria into a model for her classmates. I am proud to have her as the Student of the Month for September. Victoria has many past and present achievements. In the short time that we've been in school this year, Victoria has been nominated as the Student of the Week in Miss Schickman's class. Last year, in Mrs. DeVincent's first-grade class, she was nominated as a Peace Pal and also a Student of the Week. Outside of school, Victoria is excited about performing in Hoboken Children's Theater's production of Frog and Toad. Victoria attends school on Saturdays, where she learns how to speak Russian fluently and learns about Russian culture. She also loves traveling to Russia to visit with her grandparents. Victoria's personal quote is, "Learning is fun." When Mrs. Schickman thinks about Victoria, this quote comes to mind. Develop a passion for learning. If you do, you will never cease to grow. Victoria's personal hobbies include painting, ballet, and theater. She also loves playing with her Barbies and LOL dolls. In fact, she has her very own YouTube channel featuring her dolls. Math is Victoria's favorite subject, and when she grows up, she wants to be a doctor. With such wonderful traits, we know Victoria can achieve anything she sets her mind to. Way to go, Victoria. We are proud of you. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Wallace School Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Abraham, Principal of the Middle School. Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for September, Ava's teacher recommendation comes from the entire sixth-grade team. Ava is a student that exemplifies the spirit of HMS. Showing excellence beyond academics, Ava is a friend to anyone and everyone, always there to offer a smile or a helping hand. Ava is full of personality and humor and has the ability to brighten up a room. As an active member of the school community, Ava is a natural-born leader and thrives when given responsibility. She is highly deserving of Student of the Month and continues to be a valuable part of the HMS family. And now for the principal's recommendation. It is my immense pleasure to recognize Ava Di Giacomo as the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for the month of September. She brings a terrific energy to our school and really pushes herself and others to succeed. I enjoy greeting her at the door each and every morning, as she always has a great smile on her face. In class, Ava can commonly be found raising her hand and participating in exciting lessons, group work, and activities. Part of what she enjoys most about HMS is the element of student choice and scheduling. Ava was selected to take a variety of unique and innovative classes such as Drums Alive, Photography in Action, Junior Model UN, and Law Adventure. In each of these classes, she is exposed to content that is rigorous, dynamic, and providing of the opportunity to compete at the local, state, and national level. Ava is an active participant in the math-infused cardio club each Wednesday morning. Ava demonstrates incredible ability, but most importantly, serves as a motivator to those around her. We often recite the motto, "Fitness isn't about being better than anyone else, it's about being better than you used to be." Each session, Ava is certain to perform better than she previously had and always gives maximum effort. Ava is one of seven winners for the Eric LeGrand Sneaker Competition. This is always a very special day for our staff and students. The ESPY Award winner's message is one that resonates with all in attendance. In return, we aim to make the day equally as meaningful for Eric as it is for our school community. For the second year in a row, our amazing students surprised Eric with a hand-painted pair of Jordan Retro Ones.
pair of Jordan Retro Ones. As one of the winners, Ava was able to highlight her artistic ability on the highest of platforms. My favorite part about Ava's design was a quote that she incorporated in her work. She stated and wrote on the sneakers, "Turn your cans into cans and your dreams into plants." This is a message that we should all live by in hopes of becoming the best versions of ourselves, and this is one that she's inspired us all with. Congratulations to Ava Di Giacomo. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to introduce the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pick.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call up our September Student of the Month, Xavier Ventura. What I love about writing my words about Xavier and every student before him is you always learn something new about them that simply makes you smile. Xavier is applying to universities with strong education programs as he wants to be a guidance counselor. His dream does not stop there because he eventually wants to move on to administration in a vice principal or principal role. And I am thrilled in five years, we will have another fine educator to join the ranks. Knowing Xavier for six years as he was with us in the middle school, you truly get a sense of the kind of person he is. Quiet, polite, always greets you in the hallway when passing. It is remarkable to see his growth over the years. A very strong student in mathematics and pretty much all of his classes as he boasts a beautiful 3.40 GPA. Inducted into the National Honor Society as a junior, he has given back to his school community as well as the community at large. But Xavier is not all work. He is the captain of, team captain of the volleyball team, and let me get this correct. He broke the record for the most kills in a single game overall in the season and in team history. As frightening, as frightening as he might be on the court, he leans to his spiritual side as he's a main contributor in our Agape Club. Meeting regularly with his co-members and Mr. Thomas, he is humble and kind that always gives back to his school community. His peers look to him to set high academic and behavioral standards. If you aspire to be an administrator, you must get comfortable in front of an audience. Last year, Xavier was the master of ceremonies for our Junior Memoir Ceremony. And anyone who speaks publicly knows it is not easy. But for a 16-year-old to speak in front of an entire junior class shows a confidence that will serve him well in years to come. Most of the teachers have shared with me Xavier is a student who does not shirk responsibility. He is a well-spoken young man, always participates in discussions, has a keen insight as to what's going on in the political climate of the United States and the world today. He is a natural leader and constantly motivates his peers to infuse effort into their assignments. Last year, when responsible for teaching two scenes of Macbeth, his presentation was flawless. He has a natural ability to teach, and he delivered his lesson with confidence and compassion. His narratives are always well-drafted and have creative plot twists. Also, Xavier is extremely helpful to his teachers and peers, and he can always be counted on to successfully assist a struggling student. For me, when you want to see the portrait of a Red Wing graduate, I stand proudly with one that will be graduated in June, and I look forward to sharing and hearing about his decisions regarding university. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our students that were recognized tonight. Keep up the great work. We are now going to take a few-minute break in case anyone needs to leave and go to bed or do homework, so we'll break for just a few minutes and then get into the business portion of our meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started again. Before we go into committee reports, I'd like to recognize our dear friend Sherelle Pollack. As many of you know, the Hoboken community recently lost Sherelle Pollack. She was a community leader, a district parent, and a friend to whoever crossed her path. Sherelle was a beautiful person inside and out. She loved everything about Hoboken, especially the Hoboken Public Schools. She worked tirelessly as the president of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, raising hundreds of thousands of dollars since its inception. The Hoboken Public District is very lucky to have had Sherelle supporting our schools, our programs, and our students. I have no doubt that her legacy and her spirit will live on in Hoboken and throughout our school district. And as you'll see on the agenda tonight, there is a donation from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation in the amount of $215,000. And we are extremely thankful for this very generous donation. Okay. We're going to move on to reports. Mrs. Good, do you have a business administrators' report? No. Okay. Curriculum. Sheila.
Sure. Good evening. The Curriculum and Wellness Committee met on October 3rd at 12:45. In attendance were Ms. Evans, Ms. Connaught, Ms. Angley, Dr. Johnson, and myself. Dr. Johnson covered a lot of what we discussed during curriculum, but I just wanted to, again, congratulate the students that are heading to the Steam Tank semifinals. I'm excited to see them at the NJEA convention. And one more thing is the, I was just talking to Mr. Benson, the middle school musical Susicle will be held on November 22nd. They'll be here in this auditorium, so mark your calendars for that. I know the kids are busy rehearsing and getting ready for a really great musical. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities. Ms. Evans.
The Facilities Committee met on Thursday, October 3rd. In attendance were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamartori, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Callagie, and Ms. Good. The committee reviewed and recommended the facility requests that are on the agenda tonight, item 12.02, and we recommend all for approval. We also discussed the living classroom at Demarest. Furniture is being ordered, and licenses are being obtained to catch the fish and oysters for the classroom. What the district would like is for the middle school students to be playing an active role in the setup of the classroom, so a consultant is providing a proposal to implement this process. And lastly, we discussed that furniture deliveries for Brandt and Demarest are complete and that some additional furniture is being stored at Demarest in anticipation of increased middle school enrollment for next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Governance. Ms., I'm sorry, Finance, Ms. Takarian.
Hi, good evening. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. McGurk, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. There were a few of note or that sparked more discussion during our committee meeting in terms of approval of bills and claims. All the sort of normal things are represented there, but also all the expenses that are associated kind of one-time, things for supplies and setup of the new calendar year. I want to thank, thanks to JAS Consulting for the donation of eight mid-century guest chairs which are being used at the high school. And although Sharon made, Ms. Angley made comments on this, I'd like to let, hope you will indulge me in some similar comments. Item 10.16 is the acceptance of donation from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. We are humbled and thrilled that the Hoboken District Public Schools are the beneficiary of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation's successful fundraising. For the 2019-2020 school year, the district is receiving donations in the amount of $215,762.83. This extraordinary donation is funding a multitude of initiatives in the categories of leadership development and staff bonding, innovative learning initiatives, wellness, fine and performing arts enhancements, family experiences, technology, and personal school supplies. There was a memo that was attached to a recent herald that shares the details of how the donations are being used specifically, and I encourage everyone to take a look at that. We are so thankful for HPEF's generosity and the generosity of the community. Thanks to HPEF leadership for their collaboration with the district's administration in selecting these impactful initiatives. We cannot talk about the HPEF without also acknowledging and remembering Sherelle Pollack, co-founder and president of the foundation, whose recent passing has left a hole in so many hearts. Sherelle was a tireless, tireless and passionate defender of the power and importance of public She turned that passion, along with her co-founders, into the HPEF, which has raised more than $450,000 since its founding in 2015. Really remarkable when you consider how recent that is. Sherelle's spirit lives on in the continued work of the HPEF, and we miss her dearly. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Governance. Ms. Connaught.
Good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Takarian, Ms. Delara, Dr. Johnson, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items, 9.01 through 9.29, and recommends all for board approval. All agenda items are normal course of actions. Under 9.02, acceptance of resignation, Ms. Maggie Moreno, our supervisor of early childhood, will no longer be with us effective November 13th. We will miss her and wish her all the best in her new adventures. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
I just had one question, actually, for Dr. Johnson. For the high school, the Showcase of Excellence, is that for the, just the parents of kids at the high school, or is that open to like anyone who's interested in learning more about our high school?
Okay, so that's a really good question. This Showcase of Excellence, we will publicize it out on social media, Facebook, et cetera, as much as we possibly can. Hopefully, word of mouth as well. It is open to any member of the community with children at both our middle school as well as middle schools throughout the city, just to learn more about the programs at the high school. Families can come, they can bring their children as well, and they'll see a multitude of spaces in the high school. They'll meet people, and they'll learn about programs.
Great, thanks. And on a similar note, the Family Science Night, that is for all ages, like elementary or?
So, while it is advertised as kindergarten through 12th grade, I would probably say it is a little bit more appropriate for elementary-age children. There will be slime made and different pumpkins, and there will be seeds planted and some science experiments, so maybe upper elementary, middle school might be pushing it a little bit, but it is our first Title I family event for this particular year. Typically, we would just hold a meeting. What we decided to do this year is to wrap all of our Title I informational sessions around family activities. So, this first one is wrapped around science, we will have one wrapped around math, we will have one wrapped around social studies, et cetera, something throughout the year. And actually, you bring up a good point, asking what age range, because maybe we can wrap those other events around activities that might attract different age ranges.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to public comments on agenda items.
Board policy and bylaws provide time for general public comments at the end of each board meeting. Members of the public wishing to speak are required to place their name and address, form a sign and sheet. Public comment portions of the board meetings shall be limited to 30 minutes each unless extended by a majority vote of the board members present.
Five minutes, five minutes each. I won't be 30 minutes.
A speaker must be recognized by presiding officer and must preference comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, and if applicable, group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes in duration.
And who is the, okay, so this is agenda items only, we have no one, so we will move on to consent agenda and then move to the general public comments. So, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion? Motion. Second. Are there any items to pull or discuss?
No.
Okay. May I have, Malani? May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamartori?
Yes.
Ms. Delatorre?
No, Ms. Delara? Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connaught?
Yes.
Mr. Clipfield?
I need to abstain on 10.04 and yes on the rest of the items.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
I am going to abstain on item 6.01 and yes to everything else.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now, moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, who is, actually, who's our first speaker?
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, Wallace School teacher. Just like to say a few words about Sherelle Pollack also. On behalf of the Hoboken Education Association, I would like to extend our condolences to the Pollack family on the passing of Sherelle Pollack, the president and co-founder of the Hoboken Education, Hoboken Public Education Foundation. Although I didn't know Sherelle well, I was in awe of her spirit and determination, the spirit and determination with which she championed the Hoboken Public School District. She elevated the profile of our district and transformed it to a first choice for parents with young children rather than a last resort. I marveled at the energy she exhibited even when it was clear her health was failing. While her passing is a devastating loss, her legacy will be everlasting. Our hearts go out to her husband and her children and her family, who, sorry, screwing it all up. Our hearts go out to her family, especially her husband and her two young daughters who were students at Wallace School. While Sherelle's time on earth was short, her impact was immeasurable. We will always be grateful for her tireless efforts on behalf of the Hoboken Public Schools in the face of adversity and personal challenges. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Casey, I don't know how to say your last name.
What's your last name?
It's Glugath.
Glugath?
Yes. Hi, everybody, I'm Casey Glugath. I live at 69 Madison Street in Hoboken, and I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old. So, my four-year-old started Connors this past month, and I love the experience. So, I don't want to start off on negative. Everything is, it's a really great classroom, it's a great, great experience, but my issue is security. My issue was from the first day. What happens is at Connors, there's a side door, and the teacher just holds open the door, and everyone just walks in. And then, there's a second side door, and there's another teacher there, and everyone just passes her. Anyone could just walk into school. Now, obviously, by now, if someone has a student, they can kind of recognize you. I don't take my kid to school because I work full-time. So, I came in, you know, a couple of days later. So I came in, you know, a couple days later, and they just let me walk right through the school. So even if someone did breach into that location, there is no one around to do anything about it, and by the time a security guard from upstairs comes down, what's going to happen? Now, there's a, it's really only a 15-minute time period, it's between 8:30 and 8:45 in the morning where this issue is, and it's also at pickup time. Everyone just walks in. And I know the teachers are not happy about this either because they feel in danger also. I talked to my child's teacher, and I'm like, well, what do you think about it? She's like, it's crazy, this is done, and she's kind of quiet about it because she doesn't want to start a whole, a whole issue. Then I, all the mothers, you know, everyone starts to talk. Now everyone's kind of, kind of becoming up in arms. I know you got emails, Dr. Johnson, I emailed you, and a whole lot of other mothers emailed you. I do know the vice principal responded to me, and she said they're working with Hopes to get security. Now, there is a security, I don't know if they're armed or what they are in the main entrance, which is far away from the side door. Now, the doors are locked during the day, obviously, but I did find out from one of the parents that the grandparents came to pick up the kids in the middle of the day, walked right through the school, all asked how to get to the classroom, made it all the way to the classroom, and the teacher said, "Who are you?", and she actually ID'd them and checked. That was the first time that someone knew that there was someone in the school that shouldn't be there. In today's climate, this should not be happening anywhere near close to this. I know there's an alarm system, I heard, that's going to be put in, but to me, it's still not enough at this, even at the morning times, end of school times, and during the day. Small measures I know could be taken that could be life-changing, as in there's our doorstops you could put behind the doors, so if someone does breach the school, they can't push the doors open. They showed us how like the kids hide and what corner, what they do, but someone could just hit their hands through that glass or, and unlock the door and just get in. There should be small measures to be taken to protect our children in today's climate. I mean, I don't want to look back and say, "I did nothing." That's why I'm here today on this Jewish holiday where I'm supposed to be with my family, because I feel like this is really important. And I want to know, what do you guys think about it, and what, and I really hope there should be some sort of change. That's issue one. My other small issue is I just found out there's no working bathrooms for these pre-K3 kids. My kid's potty-trained, and he doesn't have any accidents, but the teachers now tell us that all the kids are having accidents, they're having changing clothes throughout the day, it's a total mess getting to them to the bathroom, they have to go up a flight of stairs, the pre-K3. Now, if you're in a kindergarten or something, it's a little bit different, but these kids are just learning how to be potty-trained. And I know we were told that it was going to be fixed on Saturday. So I got told on Thursday about the issue. I didn't know this has been happening for weeks on end. Parents were not even notified that our kids are taking the stairs. I got notified on Thursday. On Friday, I get an email that my kid got injured leaving the bathroom, going down the stairs because his hand got stuck in the railing, and this is also totally unacceptable. I'm really here for the security, but I'm hoping that while I'm here for that, that something, I'm going to get an answer when the bathrooms are going to be fixed. I do know it's an ongoing problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to? Do you want to? You guys feel comfortable with? Thank you for your comments. We heard you loud and clear. This really isn't a dialogue, so we can certainly get back to you on your concerns. Is there anything, if you want, if you want to on the bathroom situation?
So we do have a bathroom situation at Connor School. It does happen sometimes where there is a pipe that is clogged. We brought a plumber in to snake and camera the area, and it was filled with diapers and wipes, clear as day on the camera. So yes, the pipe is clogged. It is not a simple fix. I am not sure why our partner, Hopes, would indicate it was going to be fixed over the weekend. It is an extensive job. It requires more than a day or even two days, but we were able to secure the plumber to come in a little earlier than we had expected. It will require work through the floor, and it is not something that we can bring another plumber in to play with, because if we do, we may damage the entire plumbing system and close Connor's Elementary School down because we won't have plumbing. So I am not quite sure why any information was provided in terms of when it was going to be fixed. It is not the most ideal situation, but in terms of the Department of Education's early childhood office, preschool three and four-year-old children do have the ability to use facilities on the floor that they're on as well as one floor above. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. Is the bathroom being fixed? Absolutely, but it is extensive. So we have had conversations with staff members about proper disposal of items, and that same conversation has to happen between our provider, Hopes, and parents as well. So that's the first thing. The second thing in terms of security is that we have two providers in the district that provide early childhood services, Hopes and Miles Square. Both of those providers are hired by the Board of Education, and the services, including their teachers, custodial staff, and security runs through their budgets. It does not run through the Hoboken Public School District's budget. So we have had conversations regarding security being hired by Hopes at that door. It was not positively received initially, so both the Hopes site director as well as the principal put a series of rules and regulations about using only the front door where the security guard is located, because what is happening is people are going to the side door, and individuals in the Hopes rooms are just hitting the buzzer and allowing people in. So we, at this point, are going to eliminate that entrance completely, and entrance in and entrance out will only be through the main entrance of the school.
Okay. I think we've now gotten to the point where we can conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.